Call the meeting to order and welcome all of you this afternoon. Glad you were able to find a seat for those over in the audience. Anyone here that wants to participate in public comment? Any none? Number three on the agenda, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, we have the second go around on the classification and pay plan study. Becky Veezy from the MAPS group is here. This, as you remember, was briefed to us earlier this month and has lain with the commissioners for their review and this is the follow-up review with Becky to address any issues that you may have. With the idea and goal being to bring it back to the October meeting for adoption if possible.
All right. Have you commissioners perceived that you want to proceed? Anybody?
Have you got a question?
I guess before we be open for questions that the gentle lady would so entertain. And Madam Clerk, do we need her to speak into the mic?
Yes, please.
I would pass the permission of the commissioners for the comfort of our guests if you would like to sit at the table and speak into the microphone rather than having to stand up and be miserable. Assuming that's all right with everybody?
That's a great idea.
Yes, 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 yes.
Is that better?
Great, thank you.
All right. Anybody have questions? Or do you have anything you want to say first or anything?
I'm happy to respond to any questions or offer alternatives if you prefer to look at the alternative.
All right, anybody? Commissioners?
I may have just not, I might as well start it off. I may have not, not seen it going through the documentation. There's a lot of documentation here as well. But when you talked about the job classifications...
I haven't, I haven't read it yet. Sorry.
No problem.
Excuse me.
When you talked about the job classifications and did, is there any place in the document that we talk about especially for what I'll consider to be an exempt employee? Maybe what kind of educational background they should have or may have? Or in addition to that, not only educational but experience? Experience to me means an awful lot. And I think you did a great job in the document indicating experience versus somebody that's been there for 100 years versus somebody that's coming in but has something else unusual to offer the organization.
So behind the tab, the third tab is its classifications. If you go behind that tab for each job, so for example, I'll just, so if you tell me I'm usually a bit on this, they're in alphabetical order. So if you go to the classification, for town manager, toward the, there are three pages and on the third page it has desirable education experience. And then also certifications that are needed. And that, those two components are in place for each different job title. Some of the classifications are two pages, some are red, depending on duties. But every job has that information.
Good.
And is that from our documentation or from a generally accepted documentation for that job or?
Combination.
Combination.
So we ask supervisors when they completed the employee questionnaires what they thought was needed. We also have a general sense of what is, with general practice. And we're also guided by a court case that says you can't set educational or other requirements unreasonably high that would screen out people who didn't get the job. So a combination of all of that.
So if you had run into a job description you thought was inappropriate for the kind of work they were doing, like a service guy or whatever, you would have challenged that and said, "Look, this is a better job description"?
Well, not the duties per se. What we try to do on the duty section is reflect what people are actually doing. So we use the questionnaire the employee completes, the interview with employee and the interview with the supervisor to make sure we're really getting a good snapshot.
So the job description is what they're doing, not necessarily what they should be doing?
Yes, by far. You'll notice that for every place where we have desirable or education experience, we also say, or an equivalent combination. So for example, we may say, the police chief should have a bachelor's degree and so much experience. Someone with an associate's and more experience, for example, would, might be a equivalent combination. And that, again, that's something required by that court case.
Okay, got it. I have another, another question. The, under policy, page, page one. And I was glad, glad to see, see it in there. As you mentioned, new personal policies, the whole idea of the communication pertaining to them. We just changed this. And you had mentioned the policy versus ordinance and I'd like to get your feedback a little bit on that. It seemed to be more policy than ordinance related.
So the, there's a legal side and then there's a practical side. So the legal side of that is, there was a court case in the late eighties, I believe, that put municipalities in a bind. Prior to that case, most municipalities adopted their policies by ordinance and basically said, "This is what we're going to follow." That court case said, "If you adopt it by ordinance, then you have, you are vesting property rights in employees," which means under the constitution, you can't take property without due process. If you adopt it by resolution, you don't necessarily vest property interest unless the policy says you do, which this one does not. So what most municipalities have done to keep legal liability low is they've adopted by resolution. But they have said, "We're going to follow our policy." Just because it doesn't have the framework of an ordinance doesn't mean that we aren't just as, you know, intent on following it and being consistent with what we've told employees we're going to do.
Okay, all right.
The practical side is that what we've put in this policy is true policy, not procedures. For example, tuition assistance. They're, the town they wish to have a, you know, three or four page administrative procedure that has an application an employee can complete, it's, you know, that goes into more detail about, you know, what kinds of grades the employee has to have, might go into more detail about how far in advance of a semester starting the application has to be submitted. Those are administrative details. So we tried in the, what we've given to you, to put the kinds of things that you need to adopt, but not bog you down in details that, you know, the manager can approve and administer.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm also concerned about any changes. I'm an employee for 20 years. I came on board and there was a policy change. How that policy change actually comes down to me as an employee? The transparency associated with it and also it changes, could change the expectations at the same time. And that, I was glad to see that in there as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I'm not sure you can answer this if it's within your bailiwick. These boards change frequently in towns. Sometimes it's two years and where some of us are two years, it may become four years. Could a, does it depend on how we would approve this as to whether a new board could alter it or change it or withdraw it?
Regardless of whether, my understanding is whether it's ordinance or resolution, new boards ban it. Now, there are some laws and court cases that have some restraints on that. For example, for certain benefits, once an employee becomes vested, that the town can no longer take that benefit away. They can grandfather that person in and change it for new people coming in. But they, some employees get, once they're vested in a benefit, get grandfathered. That was a case called the Bailey decision.
Vesting is pretty obvious, and we know about vesting, but I was thinking the same thing, if the personnel have the property rights and then a new board happened to come in that just thought they would, I think it would not be right to do that. I mean, you want to do it for new people, that's fine, but you wouldn't be tampering, you wouldn't think a board wouldn't have the right to tamper with that once it's been established.
Even if, even with property rights, as long as you follow due process, you can change.
Well, due process, but not without. So some boards could come in and just snap the finger and decide to make changes. So that would be a little bit more difficult given this.
Possibly. I think the Bailey case actually covers most of those issues. Probably the biggest thing would be, for example, if you adopt it by ordinance and you made employees, gave employees property rights, then the kinds of due process, like for example, the grievance procedure. Unless the board changed the property rights, which they could do, they couldn't, for example, take away the grievance procedure. Back to the thing.
I have a, I have a question regarding the classification of the town manager. You know, our town manager has multiple roles, so, and I didn't see that finance officer as a classification or it wasn't identified in the org chart or, or anywhere else actually. But before I go there, and you say that as an official role as budget officer and finance officer, my understanding is, is the budget officer part of the town managers?
By statute.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
I mean, it, it reads that it's three separate here. That's what it means. It's a little confusing.
As, as is the manager is also the personnel officer by statute.
Okay, yeah.
So even if you had a finance director, you're still going to have to put the budget together and be responsible for it, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, that doesn't read very clearly. It says, "Perform official role as budget officer and finance officer."
So budget officer is under the statutes for a manager plan. Finance officer is a combination you and the municipality have chosen.
Right.
When we classify a job, we are classifying all the duties assigned to a single person in that job. So you, you have, any small town has people that if we went to Raleigh, for example, there might be 10 different job descriptions for the one person you have here. For example, you're just looking at, if you look at the org chart, you're, let's just say you're a public services technician. In Raleigh, there would be a groundskeeper, there would be a building maintenance technician, there would be a water technician, there would be a sewer technician. So we don't write a job description for each of those individual functions. We write one that covers what one person does. And so the same is true for the manager, because the manager's also a finance officer and over the HR function, for example, then we write one job description that covers all of it. Town clerk is another really good example. You know, many organizations would have a separate HR officer, separate PIO officer, separate town clerk, but you have to line that into a job.
But again, as this reads, you're separating budget officer from town manager and that's not, not the intent?
It's just intended to, it's not intended to separate them, it's just intended to identify all the different functions.
Okay.
You, you know that the town manager has to be a budget officer, a new board manager may not. So part of what we've tried to do is make it clear and specific.
As a budget officer has very specific requirements by statute.
That's correct.
As does a finance director. So it's very different being a manager of people in HR, you've got to be, have to do certain things to satisfy the legislature.
And again, many, much of that can be delegated. You know, City Wilmington probably has a budget management director and might have two budget analysts under that role. The manager is still over that and still presents the manager's recommended budget.
And the intent of the three options, is it to get the, the classifications and the pay, the those classifications to the average of our, of our peers?
Not. It, it was, it is intended to get the salary range to the average of your peers, not individual employees. Because averages are tricky thing on that. Part of it, you know, for example, again, just using town clerk, you know, it's, that job is different in every market we look at it. You know, in some places, HR is in it and some it's not, it's just town clerk. So trying to get an average for a person is, is not a realistic thing to do. But we don't recommend these salary ranges, the average of your market.
So for option one, the 80,000 plus dollars is to at least get to the minimum?
To the minimum plus and not have really bad compression. So that is a, it's a very conservative option, but it just spreads people out and the range down. So you don't have, like using police as an example, you don't want to have an eight-year police officer and a one-year police officer making the same thing. So it's, that option spreads them out. And it's, it's a conservative way of doing that.
And two does?
Two does it also not as well. So it's less, it's putting less money and addressing the compression and setting it And let me also go back on the job description and make another comment. Those are not adopted per se by the board. You, you adopt the titles. You know, if y'all wanted to make some changes in that, you were perfectly welcome to. We provided a fund draft that has all of that digitally, so it's easy to make changes in. Management may want to go back in and tweak some of what we've done. And that is perfectly legitimate. What we've tried to do is do really good, you know, here's sort of what we would see most places. But if you want to tweak that, that, and we recommend management, I have to come back to you with little tweaks. If they do, if they're changing a job substantially enough that it would change the classification, then we would need to approve that. But, you know, adding a line in a job description, you don't want to.
How much does your analysis reflect the fact that this is a very small staff compared to, well, it has the same functions Raleigh versus Holy Beach in terms of numbers of people, people supervise, the breadth of their responsibility? How much is that reflected in this?
We try to take that all into account, especially when comparing in your local area. You know, we didn't compare to Raleigh, but for example, we did compare to Shiloh. So, you know, we're comparing, you know, police chief to police chief, we're comparing public services director to public services director. We try to take into account what are the similarities, what's the difference, what's the scope of what's being managed in terms of, you know, facilities, vehicles, staff. You know, we try to take all of that into account.
You just brought up something that's kind of interesting, vehicles for police or, or employees. Has, has that been part of the compensation in this, this study?
There's been a really strong trend for police officers to have taken vehicles. We see that, that's pretty well established now. With other positions, it is going to vary. Usually it has more to do with the need of the person to come back, come out at night, you know, respond to an emergency situation rather than necessarily a car, except for the manager. Most places do provide either a car allowance or a vehicle allowance.
Take that as a span.
It just went weird. She got it, she's got it, David.
I think it's okay. I'll try not to touch it.
Yeah, we discussed the police, it's interesting. I mean, most, in my understanding, most police live in their jurisdiction and they, we want the police available immediately. We don't follow that, so it's kind of a, you know, kind of a unique situation. But then there's other factors why you want police as well, so, will have their vehicles.
Anybody else? Ms. Pat, do you mind if I?
I had sent Becky questions earlier, which she answered to me.
And you sent those to the rest of the board as well.
Okay. Can you, it's all right with me if you just review the question and discuss it.
I went through, the first one was the option one.
Yeah.
That I think everybody was notified about.
Okay.
There was just one general, there was one question I had about comparing health plans, which the most that Becky could provide me was the spreadsheet from the NC, the municipalities from last year's data as they filled it out and as she said, as, as they understood the questions or not. And I cannot even remember my third question now, but you answered it.
Mike, you got any?
I guess I, the one question I have is, the, the goal here is to bring the salaries and the benefits kind of equal to the competing or neighboring towns. And I guess the one thing that stands out to me is that we're going to, we do at this time pay 80% of the employee dependent's insurance, but none of the neighboring towns do that. So if we remain at that number, are we doing more than someone has an expectation of? Or is there some other part of the plan that we're giving less at so that, that's why we can justify the 80%?
So there are no more ways to answer that. You are, there, you have other people who are subsidizing dependent coverage, just not as high. So you've got, the Broadhead's at 68, Millens at 50%, Oak Island's at 40, Southport's at 30%, Sunset Beaches at 45, Wrightsville is at 40% and Yawar at 80%. When you talk about employee expectations, that, the thing to think about there is that if the town has had a history of that, that could be what has subtracted the employees that you have. And so there may be some level of exaggeration. The reason employers choose to subsidize that, whatever level they choose to do that, typically is because they want their employees to be able to afford dependent coverage. I hear from a number of employees, especially if, you know, there's no subsidy or it's like a, like 20% subsidy or something, that especially the lower paid employees cannot afford dependent coverage. So that's a policy decision that, you know, the council makes in terms of, you know, what, how valuable is that to us? To what extent is that why we have the employees we have? The part about, you know, are there other things that offset? So longevity pay is one thing that may offset that. All of your competitors, out of the nine that we looked at, seven have longevity pay and some subsidy, in many cases not give a pass. So, you know, you may say, you know, we, our policy is, or our philosophy is, that we provide a higher subsidy for health insurance and we don't provide longevity. You may say, "We want to lead the market and we want to provide a higher subsidy and longevity." I mean, that is entirely up to you. That's a, a policy decision for the business.
But you didn't, pay is also another...
The pay piece is much e, more easily quantifiable?
No, but pay and, and longevity and health benefits, they're all part of total compensation.
They are.
So I don't see how you can separate pay from, you know, they're all linked together. So if you have somewhat lower pay, more than, and you compensate that with higher health benefits, then, then it's a...
There are a couple of things to remember there as you think about it. One is that the health benefit, the dependent coverage is not needed by all of your employees. So it's going to benefit some and not others.
Yep.
The other thing to remember there is that especially millennials who are just, you know, just trying to get going and, you know, start to build their career, that pay is more important to them at that point than anything else. And so what I have found is that because, to a large extent, obviously with some differences like the health we just talked about, but to a large extent, most municipal benefits are very similar. You know, same retirement system, you've got, you know, the same 401K plans, you've got, you know, a lot of that is very similar. So I, I tend to put more focus on making sure your salary ranges are...
But, but that's not the case here. We are way different than, the average of the other is 30.33%. So compared to 80%, that's very, very different.
I'm not an HR specialist and you can slap me down if you want to at any point in time, please do, but the percentage offered is a number. It's the underlying factors of plan coverage that in particular are important when you're deciding, are we doing as well for our employees as somebody else? If somebody offers a plan that has three times the deductible and out of pocket and has a higher co-pay and has the long list of these are not covered, it may look really wonderful, but it's not. So it's, it's a hard thing to do to just go by, is 180 that much better than a 90-70 or a 90-60? And that, I mean, that is, that is very, very important. Pay draws the younger people as they move through, and this has been my experience and I've been taught HR at large companies, as they move through, money versus benefits versus retirement benefits. It's like that, you know, it's a normal progression. When you're training younger people and then they, they get into the family and all of that, you've built up experience and you want to keep them. That's when it starts to kick in about how important having dependent care is. And yes, the dependent care, it lasts for 26 years, you know, if, now it's 26 years. But again, they phase into it, they phase out of it. Everybody sort of has that curve. But I would just warn, when you're trying to keep good people, healthcare becomes one of the critical things. And again, the, the percentage is not the absolute comparison. So that, that's where this gets tricky. And I am not saying one way or another, if it's right or wrong, but I do think it's something that is for next year's fiscal budget, because the, the actual personnel policy does not commit us to a benefits sharing number.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree. It's for next budget.
Okay, so I, I mean, I think, but I think that it needs to be remembered that, that the percentage is just a percentage that unless you actually get the underlying information and compare... a percentage that unless you actually get the underlying information and compare dollar to dollar quality benefit.
Totally agree.
I, 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 I just don't want people to put too much emphasis on this.
But, but I would also argue that I don't think the board gets to select which plan, uh, that, that the town so, uh, ultimately.
No.
So we don't get to decide whether it's a, because we're paying eighty percent, it's a, a lower quality or lower, higher deduction, blah, blah, blah.
Our.
So that, I don't, we're not, we don't get to do that.
Our control is in the budget. Our control is the budget.
So I don't think that's the case in this, I understand what you're saying. I don't think that's the case here in, in Holland Beach, that the high, the deductibles are extremely high and, and that's why we're covering eighty percent. I, I would definitely not.
But again, I would say that it's the, it's the keeping your experienced people and it's, it's, it's retention. It's, it's hiring, it's getting the people and then it's retention that having a healthcare plan is probably most important. And the decision of how much you want to spend for the town on that, again, is probably more of a budget discussion.
Absolutely. I'm not, I wouldn't say change that anytime but the budget, you're right. But it's a ninety-plus thousand dollar, uh, ex, you know, expense, a budget item. Um, and let's face it, that's, eighty percent is long not the norm for industry or.
Oh, it's the norm for my industry, so, okay. It was the norm for my industry. I'm just going to say, it was.
Not, not today, it's not.
Yeah, it was and is. But just remember the, the, the amount of money that it's estimated to take if you have to hire new people. So if you have three people that regret, regrettably feel that without adequate care, they have to move on, then you're faced with hiring and retraining three people. It's a balance. It's the retention issue.
And I, I would just say, I, I asked the question, I didn't want to open up a Pandora's box. But the, the real issue is, you know, if you go from eighty percent, is it worth it in a whole to lower it? What's the real dollar cost of eighty percent as opposed to the real dollar cost of sixty percent or fifty percent? So, you know, it, it may not, it may not make, uh, make a, a whole lot of difference and it would be no reason at all to, to address that issue.
I asked that question, Mike, and it's ninety-two thousand dollars.
But it's not ninety-two thousand dollars to go.
Total.
Total. But, but we're not, you know, nobody, nobody is thinking.
So do your percentages from that.
Total. Right, right. And so, again, the, the question, the question comes to what's equitable? And if the eighty percent is, is still equitable or if it's a different number, what's the difference between what we currently cost the town to do it and what someone may think it should be in the future? And ninety thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but, uh.
You're paying twenty-five people.
We'll talk about it.
Spend some money.
Yeah, but it's really only nine people, right, that, uh, that are part of this. The other fifteen people are just individual. There's only nine people that, that use dependents in one way or another.
So you should, there was ten thousand apiece.
Well, that's what, you know, the dependent cost is, I guess you could say that. Average, average it out.
But you do have to always think about the quality of the staff that you've gotten and can you keep them?
Yeah.
I could look across the board and see some people, we did not want to lose them.
For ten thousand dollars.
If you told me, oh, he quit because, you know, I didn't give him healthcare and I said, whoa, we sure could have given a little bit more and kept him and he's that good or she's that good.
No.
Yeah.
Consideration.
And that's what you got a town manager for, to make that judgment for you. To tell you, these are the hired people I hired. This is what it takes to keep them. This is what keeps them happy.
Any more questions?
Um, I have a question for the board, so I'm assuming that option one, because it is, which recommends the, um, and the implementation date also of one January, I believe, is, option one is what's proposed. Because, um, any one of those implementations is going to require an appropriation. And in order to, because the, the salaries are spread across different funds, I, I need to do some math and bring that to the board for a, a, a budget amendment that would appropriate the funds to make this effective for the first of January. So I'm in, I'm in assuming that at the October meeting, you would adopt this study and then it could be, you know, followed with a budget amendment that would provide the funding for the one January implementation.
I mean, that's, that.
I need some direction from the board on what, how, how you wish to proceed.
That's one reason I, I wrote up my comments, because I felt it might start a sort of discussion, so we might be able to arrive at a conclusion on pay plan and the policy so that we can approve it in October. Even just approving the pay plan would help a great deal because, again, mathematics has to be done. But I think it's better to do the policy and the pay plan together. And so, you know, when I went through it, looking at compression and knowing that compression is one of the top things you want to address, that's what option one does. It's, it's the best, the best option to address the compression that's been a problem. And if we agree on that, then, again, the town manager can start to sit down and do the calculations of what has to happen with people in their new, in their new classification, their new pay range and, and the calculation of their pay. Um, you know, as I said, I think that the other part of compression had to do with having a policy in place, um, or a methodology in place that sort of gives a, 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 a way of increases that keep people moving through their pay range based on high performance. And the example that was given in there is, is a good example of how you approach that. And it would be up to the town manager really to put together what he viewed was appropriate in time so that next year during budget, making budget decisions, it was part of the decision-making process. Um, and that could happen a little bit later than getting the payroll thing sorted out for January first. Um, and then, you know, the comments about, uh, performance evaluation program, having something more structured, making sure that supervisors, um, are well educated, trained in how to use the performance evaluation, uh, process that'll be set. To me, were high priorities as well that could happen and assuming we have budget and time, um, happen in the first part of the year so that when the new program kicks in, um, people are ready for it. And then the rest of the things I wrote up were, were things in the actual personal policy that, in my opinion, you know, should, my opinion, should be altered. If I were, if I were in charge of this, I, I don't believe longevity pay is really the best way for incentivizing good performance. It's, it's just, it's my opinion. There are other ways the money can be applied um, that provide incentive as well. Um, I had a few things about tuition assistance, some words I put in, things like that. And then the vacation leave and accrual rate, um, looking at how people got vacation in the old policy versus new policy. Um, it looked more straightforward to keep the two personal days of vacation that employees currently get that don't accrue. But to just keep that across the board and to go to a, a more straightforward than just ten, fifteen, twenty days, um, it, it, it's more similar to what had been done. The, the change in vacation leave, uh, maximum accumulation that I looked at, um, in the past, the town had not been, um, allowing extra vacation to go into sick leave accrual. And, I mean, I see the, I see the need when people can't use vacation that you want to have them get away, that they can still bank it. Um, and, and my thinking, again, it's my thinking, was that since we encourage people to take vacation, to perhaps set a limit and simply say, um, an employee can, let's call it bank, no more than half of their vacation in one year into sick leave. That gives them an op- opportunity to save the days in a way, but it is still, um, making the point that, hey, we expect you guys to take vacation and rest up. And fifty percent just seemed to be an equitable number that could apply to everybody. Um, you know, so those were the things. I was thinking that what's written could be changed. None of them are huge changes. The biggest one is probably the, you know, my opinion is longevity pay is not incentivizing and that the town hasn't been doing it. It seems to be a fifty-fifty whether municipalities around here do it or not, so I didn't think it was a necessary add. Um, again, I'm just, I, I'm just trying to get, to get to something that we can agree to, um, so that we have something to come to us in October that the board can adopt.
If, if we adopt this in October, I was just told that the comp, the, uh, health is related to the budget. Isn't everything in here related to the budget?
The, well, as.
Do you have a budget? I mean, when, when, if we implement it in January.
We, as the manager said, we will have to do a budget amendment for the added salary and the increase in things like 401K and things, which I think you said calculated to eighteen percent.
Let me, let me help you with that.
Please.
The, um, in option one, for example, um, and, and, and I'm spitballing here, but to, but to give you an idea, the annual cost to implement is, is eighty thousand dollars. We're talking about, um, what I call the cabbage accounts. Becky will say it's eighteen, eighteen cents on top of that. I say it's twenty. It's easy to do the math. So for option one, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, okay, to implement for a whole year. Since we're talking about one January, we're talking about fifty thousand dollars. But you have to remember that the, um, that the positions are spread across three funds. So the impact to the general fund, the water fund and the B part fund is going to be different. And I, I've just, um, you know, loosely jotted down here, you know, it's probably going to be, most of the employees are in the, um, general fund, so it's probably going to be about thirty thousand dollars in the general fund, about ten thousand dollars in the water fund and perhaps ten in the B part fund. You know, there'll, there'll be some variation, but that's the order of magnitude for, um, what you would be looking at in terms of the budget amendment, um, to implement.
And they would come from, that, that fifty thousand would?
It would have to be an appropriation because those are, those are, that's new money on the table.
So I guess I would, I would suggest that since we're here and we, and we wanted to make some progress, that we just go through the three items, or else we're going to have this discussion in the October meeting, right? So we might as well hold it now. We've had an opportunity to look at these figures. And we can either agree or disagree to go with option one or two or three. We can agree or disagree to do or not do the longevity pay. We can agree or disagree on the medical. And that way it'll give, you know, a, a basis to, to formulate the issue that we'll discuss in next month's board commissioners meeting, rather than just starting and doing this all over again.
Well, I, I, I don't know if I'm ready to do that actually, but I don't think we can do medical, can we? I mean, didn't we sign a year?
I, I think that's, I think that's one for, yeah, I think it's, it runs through the end of this year, doesn't it?
Medical, medical won't change as a result of doing anything with this plan. That's the.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Or the health, excuse me, the health benefits.
So again, we're separating, which makes no sense to me. It's part of compensation.
No, but it's, uh, if we're looking at figuring out pay, it's, it's, again.
It's ninety-two thousand dollars worth of compensation.
Again, I guess that's my point, right? Either we want to discuss the package and kind of see which way we would like to go. Whether, whether it affects it immediately or not, it is, it is intertwined.
That's what I'm saying. It does, I, I want to get the clarification. It doesn't affect it immediately in medical, so.
But it is intertwined because the decisions we make are going to carry forward, right? We're not going to change in six months what we think is appropriate now. So e, you know, again, either we talk about all three of them and kind of lay out, at least lay out the, the issues that, that are either of concern or not of concern, or else we wait and we do it all in October. We have to do it.
Well, we don't have to do it, but, um.
Well, we're, we're not, we, we just had this study done and we're not going to, we're not going to do anything with it?
So one thing, we just said we can't do until due budget, right?
No, we, the, no, the medical.
Peter, you, you agreed that.
You guys are the ones who wanted this study.
Wait, 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 let's not, you, I think we're talking, you agree, I believe, that this is all intertwined. So if we decide on
That's my point.
the, the salary component, then we should discuss the benefits component as well.
But we just said, Mike, we can't change that until.
We're not, we're not talking about changing it, but we're talking about when we implement it, then we'll know what we're actually going to do.
What a policy would be.
Okay, fair enough.
Right, that, that's why I'm not saying we're changing anything, but we'll, we'll know what we're looking to do when that time comes.
Okay.
Right?
Ma'am, do you have something you want to?
I was just going to say typically, to make changes to a health insurance policy, it has to be at a reasonable time.
Yeah.
So that, that's the piece that will last.
I know, I'm getting everything in the mail now and it's all going up.
Well, that's, that's the other point. The percentage is a percentage.
Going up.
And it goes up.
Trust me, it's going to go up.
Quite a bit. So that, it's a percentage, which is not just a regular dollar.
When we provide increases to employees, salary increases, is that done after the performance evaluation? Is everybody evaluated at the same time or is it different times?
Anniversary date.
Anniversary date. So what we're talking about, I mean, if you're looking at dollars here, you know, it's, it's, these dollars, like, David was kind enough to put down a few suggestions to us and that. But these dollars would be, again, you know, on the anniversary date for the employee, that's when they would have to be available, right?
But you should, you should make the whole appropriation for the whole year and then you, you understand there will be lapse salary depending on when the valuation date is.
Right.
But just, just to clarify, if, if for argument's sake, we went to option one and payable on January first, then according to where people are sitting today, they would, everybody would get a, an, an accommodation or a movement up to the, the mid-range?
Like a salary adjustment?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what Mike is talking, a salary adjustment.
Everybody would get that adjustment.
Rather than a performance or who, who's ever jobs warranted.
Whoever's below, be low pay scale now.
That's a two-part question. That's correct, yes. Those, those that have been reclassified would move forward.
It would be according to the chart proposed, right? I mean, okay.
So I just want everybody to understand, it's not all happening all at one time.
But it, but a large part of it is.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
A large part of it is. It's going to happen January first.
But it's not happening equally to every classification.
No. So I guess that, that was, we'll go back to what I'm saying. If we agree with that, then that's one thing we won't have to discuss in October. But if we agree with that, then I think there are other components that we should discuss. Or else you're going to agree to. Or else you're going to agree to this adjustment and then maybe regret agreeing to it if you look at the other component individually.
Got it. Yeah, to me, it's a whole.
Right, right. So, so, so that's what I'm saying. Either we sit here and discuss it today or we're gonna do it at the meeting in October, right?
Yeah, that's a choice.
I will make one other statement about people and keeping them. And there has been a real trend over the last five to ten years across all of employers, be it public or private sector, that increases in pay were being eaten up by increases being passed on in the medical care, insurance care. And it's something that always needs to be considered because, um, again, you are trying to attract and retain good people. And so, giving them raises that don't even make up for the added healthcare costs that get passed on when you change policies, um, is not motivational.
Yeah, tho- those increases, though, are related to, we, it's a percentage of their pay. And, and those increases are a percentage of the, of the inflation or whatever, the increase of the medical. So, it's a double whammy, right? They, the, the, it's a percentage and the, the added cost, so it's, that's-
Anyone else? Is there anything other than the chairman left?
Well, I've had asked a question, I'd asked a question for direction on how you'd want me to bring the, bring the, uh, implementation forward on that. And without guidance on how to do that, there won't be an implementation whenever it's brought forward to you for adoption in October. And that's probably just as bad as not having never done the study.
Right.
Well, I, I would move that we, we agree to use option number one.
Have a motion on the table.
I would second that.
Motion made and seconded in discussion.
Is that including the, uh, tenure one percent a year? That has one percent built in for every year of service.
That's, option one is the, is the one that-
And I thought you didn't want to do that.
No, I, no, 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 no. No, that, no, longevity pay is a separate issue from that. No, the, the option one is the one that, that decompresses the range.
It's on page ten.
So that you have the bell curve sort of approach. Longevity pay is a separate thing where it's an absolute dollar amount based on your years of service. Option one is the, is the way that we do the pay.
So, it says it has one, one percent per year.
Oh, but that's, that's, yeah, it's, 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 this is a very conservative implementation, yeah.
I understand that. But it does have one percent per year, and this is-
But that's setting the pay. That's setting somebody's pay. That's not giving a bonus.
And that's a one-time thing.
Yeah, that's the adjustment.
That's just the way you get people onto the new pay plan. That would not be something you would do every year following.
Right. Oh, I kind of see it as a sal- salary adjustment.
Yes.
But the salary adjustment is you're going to bring people that aren't in the minimum category now, they're gonna cross the bridge and go over into the minimum from a competitive standpoint. And that's why we did this study.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah. So, we keep going around in a circle here, so, but-
That's why I recommended we, we take option one.
Option one clearly defines that, you know, that what we're doing, we're bringing people into the minimum of the, of their range.
Then what is option two, not bring them into the minimum?
The difference between option one and option two is option one, both, all four options taking boys to the minimum of their recommended range.
That's what I thought, so.
Option one also then moves them so, and somebody who's been with you eight years-
Less compression.
Eight percent higher than somebody who's been with you zero years or one year. Um, so that, o- option two is doing it, um, based on point seven five percent per year. And instead of starting at hiring date, it starts at the date of their last promotion or entry into their current job. So, option one moves them more, option two moves them a little less in the range, option three moves them a little bit less.
I, I would say that if you, it's a simple explanation, right? And if the purpose of having this done was to get an accurate and a fair value on the services that are rendered, that a person who is doing the same job but has been doing it for eight years competently should be compensated at a higher rate than a person who just started doing that job. And so, that in effect, option one is a fairer way of compensating the employees of the town. And that's why I suggest option one.
I, I would argue that they're all fair and, but they just have a different level of compression is what I've been told.
Uh, and your compression, um, you, what this is doing is jump-starting addressing your compression. You're still gonna be behind an A-ball, um, compression issue. Um, so, option one is jump-starting you better than option two or option three. But it's not taking you to where, like I said, you should necessarily be. It's not giving you more than that.
So, if I'm in, if I'm in mid-range of my job now and I've got twenty years' service, what impact will this have on me?
Um, probably none. If you're already at midpoint.
I'm at midpoint already. So, is this only for people who are-
Twenty-five percent into the fifty percent range. And if you've got twenty years of service, that's exactly where we would be putting you, at midpoint, twenty years. So, you would be-
So, is this primarily for people who are at the low end of the range?
If you're right, where option one would be putting you.
John, John, if you, if you look at page twelve,
Yeah.
there's a graph that shows you the effect of each option on the, on the number of employees that it will affect.
Right.
And so, if you look at it, you can, you can see how some people are not outside of the norm. And some people are very much below the norm. So, so their salary will be, will be brought up to, to the norm. And again, if we do option number one, the more people will be brought up to the norm and what they can expect. If we take option two, people will be brought up to the norm, but they still won't be getting what you would think they were entitled to, fully entitled to. Is that, is that accurate?
So, if you, if you think about the actual pay of where somebody, you would want them to be, option one's getting them closer. None of them get it, get you all the way there.
All the way to the finish line.
All the way, what, what's there?
Um, so, would you want a twenty-year employee to only be at midpoint? You'd probably want them to be above midpoint.
Right.
This only gets them, option one only gets them to midpoint. Option two doesn't get them to midpoint, and option three gets them even less close to midpoint. So, that's why I say option one's very conservative. It's not, it's probably not giving them as far as you would hope, but part of that is because you have a performance, um, philosophy. So, we're not taking people really far out into the range based on seniority. We're getting them, we're jump-starting that compression, but then leading it up to performance to help move them further in the future.
My, my, my original expectation, and let me repeat myself, right, in going this direction, was to take people that weren't in the minimum, right, to do an assessment and evaluation of the local area. And this way, you know, we put people at the minimum that deserve to be at the minimum because they're below the minimum. Am I correct?
This does that, yes.
Are we changing the ranges in this process?
All, do all three options do that?
Yes, all three options are based on recommended pay table, which is on page, um, fourteen. Page fourteen is essentially the pay plan that we recommended to you. So, that is a page that you would adopt, when you adopt the pay plan. Um, and then page thirteen is sort of a companion piece to that, which is, shows you where the midpoint is. The, the allocation of jobs to pay grades is your pay plan, and that's what page fourteen is.
Mike, I would be in agreement if, if our other compensation was in line, but it's not. So, we're, we're, we're doing a very, a hundred thousand dollar, basically, pay to get people to the right pay, but, and, and, and a big jump. So, are we, and I, I don't, I'm not advocating this. I'm certainly would not, not do this. Would not do a drastic change in the medical, uh, insurance. I don't think that's fair at all. So, that's why I wouldn't do a, the, the most drastic, the most costly change in the pay because I wouldn't advocate doing the most cost-effective, dramatic in the, um, in the benefits, medical benefits.
You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of things here. It's like going to the grocery store and picking, picking things off a shelf and that. And again, I'll, I'll repeat myself, you know, the, my original objective was to make sure that, that the employees here in Holden Beach are at least paid within the scale, you know, that, that they deserve. My, my opinion right now or my suggestion is that we pursue that, take that direction. Peter, the discussion pertaining to the other compensation issues, I, I think, you know, we're gonna go around and around on that. But, uh, so, I would, I would recommend to the group that we at least consider today to, the, given David direction on the salary.
I, I agree. So, so, we go back to my, my motion was that we adopt option number one. And just to, to say, both, both of you, I don't think our goal is to be able to just pay the minimum. Our goal is to be able to pay a fair salary.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so the minimum is not, not my goal here and not, not the bar that I'm looking at. When I listen to what was presented to us, when I look at the document in front of us, to me, the fair salary is option number one. You can disagree with me, but it's time that we made a decision, I think, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think another thing that, you know, we always talk, everybody agrees that loyalty and longevity in an organization is valuable. Not just where you were in your job, but to the overall organization. And I think one of the things that one does, because it is one percent per year of service with the town, not in your current position, that is one of those things that really highlights that we are rewarding people for staying in the organization and working their way through and up as much as they can. It, it, it is valuable for people to know that their long-term service and not just what they do in their job is also valued, and that's option one.
Yeah, and once, once again, I'm not saying we keep everybody, I'm not happy with minimum either. Me as an employee, I wouldn't be happy at a minimum. What do I need to advance? What do I need to correct that? What do I need to do? And I, I would have an opportunity to do that. Again, my concern was those folks that may not even be there, and let's get them there.
Right, but I'll repeat, it's a hundred thousand dollars fiscally we, we'd have to find that we don't have budgeted. And I would be more comfortable in option two, that we could balance how we're paying, how we're spending money and, 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 and then try to, try to correct that balance or, or make that balance, if that's what we choose to do, over a number of years, or at least two years.
Just one point, it will be fifty thousand dollars because we're gonna implement it for half of the year. So, let's, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's fifty thousand dollars, not a hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred a year, right.
All right. Any more discussion? I'm sorry.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say no?
No.
Four to one, Madam Clerk. Is there any more business to come before the board, Madam Clerk? Hearing none, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.